On Monday, October sixth, two thousand twenty-five at five oh four P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Ron Martinez. Miss Resilient. I always hear full names, excuse me. It's Tennessee Williams. Uh, Mr. Isaza.
Here.
Mr. Willahan.
Here.
Mr. Collmore and Ms. Wilson.
Fudge of allegiance, please. Yeah, Vice Chair is remote tonight, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to appoint me acting Vice Chair.
Motion to appoint.
By the mayor, second by Mr. Isaza. Uh, roll call, please, uh, starting with Ms. LaFave.
LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Isaza.
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sheen. Oh, sorry, Ms. Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes. So, did anyone sign up for a public comment?
No.
And we don't have any students. I know we have a couple of presentations, but pending no objection, I'd like to take some of the action items up first. Um, with this, so, um, as long as there's no objections, we will skip down to new business and the nurse recommendations for official appointments. Like to entertain a motion, the school committee vote to appoint school nurses as recommended by the superintendent per policy, uh, B B A. By Ms. LaFave, second by Mr. Isaza. Any discussion? And a list of those nurses are in the packet. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Isaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes. And as we're doing this, I'll invite the people from Dean to start to get situated and stuff. If you want to come up, just, um, feel free. Um, out of state travel, um, that the school can be vote to approve and authorize out of state travel for Rebecca Thompson, Director of Academics, and Caitlin Razaza, Associate Director of Early Literacy, to attend the Ignite Reading Conference in Boston, um, November fifth through the seventh. Move by Mr. Isaza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wellahan, any discussion? All those in favor, uh, roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Isaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. And then, uh, the school can be vote to approve and authorize out of state travel for the people listed in the agenda to, um, attend the Administrators of Special Education Conference in Worcester, uh, on October thirty-first, March twentieth, and June third. Move by Mr. Isaza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wellahan, any discussion? Roll call, please.
May?
Yes.
Zaza?
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to budget transfers and reports, the school committee accept the gifts and grants received listed in the, uh, report attached.
I move.
Move by Ms. LaFave, is there, second by Mr. Isaza, any discussion? Mr. Wellahan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, can we send like a thank you note to the person that, um, donated the panty, uh, piano? I think it's just, uh, you know, um, estate, yeah, yeah. That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
May?
Yes.
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 Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Warrant approval process, if the school can be vote to accept the report of the warrants approved as listed above or listed as attached. Move by Mr. Isaza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. LaFave, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Zaza?
Yes.
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 Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, budget transfers, the school can be vote to approve the budget transfers as attached.
I move.
Move by Ms. LaFave, is there a second by Mr. Isaza, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Wellahan?
We had the one for the, um, uh, it was like sixty-seven thousand dollars for the mapping program. Is that on that, um?
It is.
Yep.
Um, not sure whether the full, full committee wants to do a, um, like a meeting with the vendor, so we, we, we approve the financing for that, for that project, but, um, I'm not sure whether the, the vendor can make a presentation to the full, full committee.
Well, if, I mean, is, are you amending, are you gonna make a motion to do that? Because there's a motion on the floor to approve the transfers.
Well, we can approve the transfer, that's fine, but moving forward, um, I'm not sure whether, when we're talking about school security, I think the vendor should do a full presentation to the full, the full committee, not just the finance committee. That's my, my recommendation. I, I'm not sure whether it's in amendment or not, or I can make that.
Mayor Garcia?
I don't know how other members feel, but if you talked about it at committee thoroughly and, um, got the necessary feedback, I'll, I'm fine with a report back.
Okay.
But it is a good.
It's in our minutes, yeah, or.
It is a really good program and presentation. If the body does want it in the near future, um, especially maybe the final product when it's up and running and done, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, that's fine.
And just when we schedule those, just a reminder, all of those school security presentations occur in executive session.
Yeah. I don't think it's really like a tactical.
Well, especially once it's done.
They don't get into like the nitty gritty. Well, the presentation that I saw didn't get into the specifics of what they're doing, um, for each school. It's just an overview of, of the product. Did I know, uh, Mr., um, Mr. Soto, uh, had, had some questions too that, that were answered.
Uh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Isaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, that the school can be vote to accept and approve the minutes of July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, August eighth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, April second, twenty-twenty-five, Policy and Governance Meeting Minutes, and April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, Policy and Governance Meeting Minutes.
I move.
Move by Ms. LaFave, is there a second by Mr. Isaza, any discussion? Mr. Wellahan?
One of them, I think. I apologize.
Move Mr. Wellahan to table, is there a second?
All the minutes, each on table, second.
Any discussion, or it can't be discussed, roll call, please, on tabling.
Um, Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Three thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Um, Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Well, I'll move back up to the top of our agenda. And give me one moment.
Yeah.
Mr. Protem Chair.
I apologize.
Mayor.
I, considering that I'm hoping we can make it through the agenda, which is great. I know I'm gonna step, step off around six fifteen. I think you're leaving too. We won't have a quorum. Um, I'm interested in this agenda item, upcoming Executive Director Finance vacancy. I don't know if we can go out of order and take that up.
So am I. There's also a concern, though, that there's two votes that have to be made for the vocational program that also have a deadline, so.
Excellent.
There's a tight deadline on, on both, so.
Alrighty.
Um, we will turn things over to the superintendent and his team from Dean.
Yeah, we're short on time, so I'm just gonna kick it over. Um, thank you guys for being, uh, flexible and showing up, uh, a week later. Um, and I'll let you guys go through the presentation. I know there were, um, a few pieces to this, and I already provided framing to the committee, uh, last week around, you know, uh, changing our programming and web shop and going through an official process to, uh, different Chapter Seventy-four program around the C T E expansion grant, providing an oper, you know, one of the things that we're definitely interested in is exploring, um, in early childhood, Chapter Seventy-four program. We think that it would be a great opportunity, and there's definitely a need, uh, even within Holyoke Public Schools to create that pipeline for, um, early childhood teachers, but with all, I'll just kick it over to you guys to go through the presentation.
Great. Uh, thank you, everybody, for having us. Uh, I'm Joel McCall, Career and Technical Education Director at Dean. Rosie?
Rosie Cratchelo, the Principal at Dean.
Uh, we'll go quickly because I know it's in the interest of time. Uh, you'll have two, uh, documents, uh, to be referred to Policy Subcommittee on your agenda tonight. Uh, there's been a change in state C T E admissions protocol and law, uh, that requires us to update our admissions policy, uh, to be in line with that. Along with that admissions policy, it comes with a career exploration guid- guidance for eighth grade. Both of these are consistent with state guidance, and, uh, we'll go through your Policy Subcommittee, which we will be, uh, there to be able to provide feedback. Um, the presentation you have in front of you, uh, I won't go word for word, but I'll just glance over at the slides and fill you in on a few things. Dean Tech has had a programming and web development shop, uh, which is a technology computer programming based shop for quite a while now. We've really struggled over the years to fill this position, uh, the teaching positions in these shops, uh, and, uh, after a lot of investigation and research, uh, have come to you with, uh, a request to move forward, uh, to transition that program from a programming and web development program to an information, uh, support services and networking program. There's a couple of reasons for this. Number one, we haven't been able to staff in three-plus years. Uh, we've had limited applicants. Uh, we have been able to fill two teaching positions, uh, just recently, um, but the average salary for someone with a programming background is exceptionally high. Uh, they're in high demand, particularly here in Massachusetts, and someone with that level of education is making upwards of seventy to a hundred thousand dollars, which is hard for us to compete with. In an I S S N, uh, setting, it's a little bit easier for us to compete with. You're talking about entry-level help desk, uh, engineers and technicians, as well as networking support specialists. Those are the kind of folks that are all over Western Massachusetts, and we feel pretty comfortably, uh, we'd be able to attract here from a teaching, uh, vacancy perspective. There's also, what we also took into account is student interest. Um, unfortunately, our programming and web shop should be one of our highest enrolled programs, given the earnings potential, but over the years, it has actually been one of our lowest enrolled programs. There's a lot of reasons for that, uh, and we believe, um, the, the staffing is a big part of that. So, there's a timeline associated with it. Uh, just, uh, we submitted an intent to apply to the state to apply to open an I S S N program. Uh, that's non-binding, but we had to meet that, uh, October third deadline. That just starts the process and conversation. And then November fourteenth, we have a Part A application that is due. Part B will be due March sixth. June twelfth, all, uh, part components must be finalized, and then as quickly as Desi can turn it around, they will inform us, uh, whether or not we are approved. Uh, we are working with Desi as well. Uh, we don't want to formally close our programming and web shop until we have an idea of whether or not they'll approve an opening of an I S S N shop, and so we're working closely with them to sort of ensure that these things are linked together so that there's no disruption of programming. One thing that's important to note, any closing of a vocational programming comes with a three-year step-down period, which means, uh, we're supposed to phase it out, uh, so that there's no disruption for students currently enrolled. There's no playbook on how to actually do that, and so we evaluate at the time that we, uh, start that process, uh, coordinating with students, families, and staff. Um, and what that looks like remains to be seen, but we'll certainly, uh, keep you abreast of that, uh, if we go forward. It is, everything that we do in C T E, uh, when it comes to making programmatic decisions should be aligned with the Pioneer Valley Labor Market Blueprint. Uh, that is a workforce development report provided by Mass Hire, uh, that does a regional, uh, workforce scan and determines what the needs, primary needs in Western Massachusetts and in our Holyoke footprint are, and this is directly aligned with that. Most of the programming and web jobs are out east by big, high-priced tech companies. A lot of help desk and networking jobs exist with vacancies here in Western Massachusetts. One component, um, that is, is starting to be discussed a lot is A I's impact on our educational offerings, and programming and web is no different. Uh, you'll see, uh, a, a report just came out, uh, not too long ago, that, uh, sixteen percent of entry-level programming roles, uh, and coding jobs have been destroyed by artificial intelligence that can do a lot of these on its own. So while the folks who have decades of experience, uh, are able to maintain their positions, the entry-level positions, um, are being really, really hurt. So our perspective, after discussing and, and doing research, is that, um, it's a better workforce opportunity to transition to I S S N because there'll be immediate openings for our students here in Holyoke. Last but not least, on, on this one, everything we do, we try to align with the strategic plan for the district, um, and this fully, uh, fully aligns with that, keeping students with in, in-demand skills and credentials directly aligning with our workforce partnerships. It will improve, uh, our ability to recruit qualified educators to put in fr- front of the students and offers an equitable pathway to students in these fields. Moving on to early education and career, uh, I'm particularly excited to bring this forward because a lot of people in this room uh, and in this district over the last decade plus have been involved in some form of conversation around early education and care here in Holyoke. Uh, and it was, uh, thankfully, our Assistant Superintendent Jackie Lashine, who sort of revived that after a prompting from Superintendent Soto, um, to revisit and see where our role in early childhood and care could, could be. Uh, we resurfaced a report the district had commissioned in two thousand and sixteen that did a feasibility study, uh, working with our partners, uh, in the community, uh, working with the Mass Hire, with, uh, the Valley Opportunity Council, uh, as well, uh, as other early child, uh, care partners like Head Start. Um, looked at that study and determined a whole lot of it was still relevant, uh, and there's, remains a great need for early education, uh, professionals. So there's a lot of opportunities that come with that. Um, the opportunity for us to create a new Chapter Seventy-four vocational program, which, uh, will also in, in, allow us to enroll, uh, sixty new students at Dean and, and, and provide access to sixty new students for vocational education that we're currently not able to offer to. Um, there also remains the opportunity to partner with, uh, outside partners like, uh, the Valley Opportunity Council, uh, and Head Start, or our, our own H P S preschool offerings, uh, which are exceptionally high quality, to expand access uh, and to, quite frankly, build a pipeline of qualified professionals to staff it. It is, again, aligned with the Workforce Regional Blueprint. Uh, twelve to fourteen percent job growth in this field expected by twenty thirty-two. Uh, next slide. Uh, the Va- Va- Pioneer Valley projects three hundred and fifty annual openings in childcare and early education with an absolutely urgent demand for bilingual and culturally responsive educators. This is where Holyoke has an opportunity to lead in solving this problem. Here are some of the challenges that they face in this field. Workforce shortages, uh, they are not able to staff these early childhood programs the way, uh, that is needed. There is high retention and turnover in these fields because there's a lack of well-prepared and credentialed staff. Uh, there's equity gaps, as I mentioned, a huge need for bilingual and culturally responsive educators, and a growing demand with twelve percent increase by twenty thirty. For our students, this means an opportunity for immediate entrance into the workforce. Students can work at local childcare centers, preschools, and after-school programs. We also look at this as a possible, a staff retention possibility. Uh, s- school districts around Holyoke that do offer something like this provide early childcare, uh, to their staff members, something that we potentially in the near future could host here at Dean, which would help with the staff retention model. Long-term career growth, not only would be hoping to grow early child could, care professionals, but teachers for all of our programs, uh, and there's a lot of possibilities for upward mobility for those students, as well as higher education articulation agreements with our partners at H C C and the state college system. So, our students will get real-world experience. They'll be college and career-ready. We'll be able to offer more students a vocational pathway in Holyoke, which is in great demand, not only here, but statewide. Not enough seats for the interest that exists, and it will provide a real significant impact on the community, both here in Holyoke and the greater Holyoke era. Again, we focused on ensuring it is aligned with the strategic plan here with, uh, Holyoke Public Schools. Uh, the early literacy and whole child focus, career readiness focus, equity, inclusion, and educator development. We're particularly excited about that, building that pipeline for H P S and growing our own. The timeline, uh, is similar to I S S N, if not exact. Uh, we will, uh, we did submit the intent to apply on the third. That is the beginning of that process, again, non-binding. Uh, we will have Part A and Part B, which, uh, formalize the process due by June twelfth and a decision in early June. Both of these programs, if approved, would open for the next, uh, school year in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Next slide. Uh, the C T E expansion grant is how we plan, uh, to do this in a sustainable way for the district. When we open programs, when we close programs, when we update programs, there's certainly a cost associated with that. Um, but our fantastic team here at H P P S, uh, our grants and our finance team have really done a great job at helping us apply for grants and ensuring, um, that we are able to get the most bang for our buck and deliver on the improvements and opportunities that are out there for us. So we're going to apply for a one million dollar grant and a one million dollar, uh, two mil- one million dollar grants through this program, one for our electrical program and one for early childhood. The reason for that, uh, I will explain in detail. The electrical program, uh, is one of our highest in-demand shops. It's no surprise anyone looking for an electrician is having a hard time finding them. It's because a lot of the ones that used to exist have retired. It's a great opportunity for our students, and there's a huge amount of jobs out there, so we've really, uh, focused on growing that program, and it's, we've done that, but we've also, uh, gr- outgrown the space that has been there since Dean opened, uh, in the late eighties. And so, um, we ha- have taken advantage or seek to ta- take advantage of the former metal fabrication shop, which, uh, is sort of ready to go, if you will, with some, uh, minor work to be done there to allow us to update it. But the space is perfect for an electrical program. It allows us, um, to meet the Desi requirements, uh, or recommendations around space, which we're currently not meeting because the shop is just too small. Um, but w- it'll allow us to meet those as well as, uh, continue to grow the program. Uh, w- one of the things that, uh, early on, one of our instructors came to us asking if they could partner with the carpentry program, like they've done at other schools, to build a model home and wire it in the shop. Well, we can't do that right now because the shop floor is not big enough, but we would be able to do that, um, in the near future, uh, if this grant is approved, and uh, we have every reason to believe that we be, will be very competitive, uh, in this grant process. With regards to early childhood, we have, uh, tentatively identified a space that would work and actually work really well. Again, with limited investment, I say limited because these are big dollars, but, uh, in the grand scheme of things, these are limited investments. The former graphic arts shop has, actually has a near-perfect layout, uh, with, you know, multiple classroom options, as well as a shop floor for early childhood. Um, and so that is the preliminarily, uh, identified location. The, uh, improvements that will need to be made will primarily, uh, need to be around fixtures. Uh, we need to put a playground in, uh, if you will, uh, as well, uh, and just making some cosmetic updates to the shop to get going, but otherwise, we're well-positioned to launch. Um, that concludes, uh, our presentation. Uh, we've been working really hard on this. We want to thank everybody for their partnership, um, and, um, look forward to adding more seats and more offerings at Dean.
Are there any questions? Mr. Isaza?
On the early education and care, um, I am deeply aware of the significant and importance of this program. I happen to be a former member of the original Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care. So my question is, are you, are we in any way coordinating this or getting the guidance and support of the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care?
It's a great question. Yes, we're lockstep with them. Uh, we are, uh, go, plan to go over what the Chapter Seventy-four recommendations are for this program and align it directly with, uh, E E C.
Any other question? My only question is about the start, um, especially with the early ed program, and I know it says it'll start the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, but the I am hesitant to assume that any of the modifications with the grant award and going through the process would even be able to prep. So is it start to prep the program, or you actually intend to have students September twenty twenty-six?
I think we share your nervousness, um, around that, um, but that is what Desi's, uh, requirement is. So once approval, we need to open. Um, what opening looks like doesn't necessarily look like opening at the completion of everything we want to do. That might just look like meeting the bare minimums for requirements and then making everything look pretty later.
Okay, and having to work with maybe other partners.
Right.
For the child experience, okay.
Yep.
And it also seems with because of this, there's two things we need to vote on, so I don't know if someone wants to.
Yeah, um, there's two things, uh, that we're looking for a vote on and, and, um, Mr. McCullough, uh, mentioned it at the beginning of his presentation. Um, Desi updated their admissions policy guidance for C T E, and, and I feel like we're, our policy is very much, you know, kind of aligned to the new guidance that they have, but we do have to go through a process which involves getting the school committee to create, to adopt the policy by, uh, November first. Um, and we want to make sure that we have enough time to do that. Um, they've done a lot of work on it, and like I said, the, the policy that we already had included a lot of the elements that they're looking for. Um, you know, you know, uh, the lottery piece, for those of you that don't know, we've already shifted to, um, to a lottery-based system where, you know, you can award certain points during the application process, but at the end of the day, it is a lottery. Some kids go into the lottery more than once based on their scores, but um, our, our policy pretty, uh, fits really well with what the guidance that has come out with, so. And then the, and another part of that process is to make sure that, uh, eighth graders or middle schoolers are, are creating a pathway. Again, one of those things, like, we've already been doing tours, so all of our eighth graders do have an opportunity to visit both the North Campus and the Dean Campus, so I, I think we're well-positioned to be in compliance with this, but, uh, we're looking for a motion, uh, to move these items to the Policy Subcommittee so that we can iron out the details and make sure we hit our November first deadline.
Okay, so the two items that we're referring are the middle school pathway, C T exploration, and the current admission policy. Okay. Okay. Motion's been made to refer the middle school pathway, uh, exploration, and the current Dean school admission policy to the Policy Subcommittee. Move by Mr. Isaza, is there a second? Second by Mr. Wellahan, any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Isaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you both so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we are going to go down I think that no one's objecting to the upcoming Executive Director of Finance, uh, topic, because I think that that probably the next on the agenda, or what should be next.
Yeah, so, um, many of you know Sean Mangano, um, uh, gave us his notice a couple of months ago, and he, his last day is gonna be October seventeenth, and, you know, I can't stress enough how lucky we were to have Sean Mangano. Um, my first couple of years of being superintendent, I was very much My first couple of years of being superintendent, I was very much involved in the finance department. And since Sean has come on board, you know, he's, he's just such a strong leader. He has a ton of technical skills. He has a great personality, has worked well with the committee, has worked well with the city council. And we're, you know, we're really, really going to miss him and wish him the best and thank him for all that he's done for Holyoke Public Schools. I also wanted to take this opportunity to share some important information with you. Mayor Garcia, the Vice Chair of the School Committee, Dr. Rivera Cologne, members of the School Committee, and everybody out there in the community listening. You know, I've had a lot of time to reflect, and I've decided that I, I will not be applying for the superintendent. I know you guys are going through a, a search pretty soon, and while it was hard, it's just been truly an honor. It's just been an honor working and serving the district and working alongside all of you. We face challenges with determination, and we've celebrated meaningful successes. And I'm just really proud of what we have accomplished together. From strengthening teaching and learning to supporting our students' social-emotional needs, to building partnerships that make our school stronger and more connected to our community. I'm especially grateful for the trust and the collaboration with the School Committee, for the dedication of our teachers and our educators and our staff, and for the resilience and the brilliance of our students. Everything we've achieved has been possible because of our shared commitment to putting children first. While I will not be a candidate moving forward, please know that I remain fully dedicated to this role for the remainder of my tenure and, and to ensure a smooth and successful transition. Our work together really has been the highlight of my career, and I will carry it with me always. I also want to take the opportunity to share with the School Committee, I really love Holyoke, and I'm definitely open to returning now that, you know, now that Sean Mangano is leaving. I'm definitely want to express to the committee my openness to return to the role of Chief Finance and Operations Officer for the district. Knowing that Sean's going to be gone, it's going to be some hard, hard shoes to fill there. No matter where, where we end up going, I hope the School Committee will consider this as an option to ensure stable leadership and continuity for the district during this important time. You know, I've, I know that I can go on and be a superintendent in another community. I know that I can, you know, take on different roles in other communities, but I love Holyoke. This is where my heart is, and this is where I'd like to remain.
Anyone have any questions or comments there?
Yeah, I just want to, I, it's been great. You know, and these leadership roles, whether if you're the mayor, superintendent, or any leadership role at that mag, that capacity, it's, it's, it's difficult. And I have to say, Anthony, you, you did, you've, you know, you, you had strong leadership and, and you navigated our circumstances as it is and, and brought forward the results and, and progress and even just managing through COVID period, you know, and navigating, you know, you hear about budget challenges happening in other districts and how you've been able to get us through that storm and, you know, protect our students, protect our, our staff and educators in the district. You know, it's, it's been great working with you in this capacity, and I am thrilled to know that you're willing to stick around as a CFO. I mean, stable leadership and continuity, you know, I, I, if I was a new superintendent coming in, you know, I, I, any good superintendent would make sure that, you know, would, would welcome, I'm sure, keeping you around and helping with that transition. And so anyways, it's something the school board can talk about altogether. But just want to express my appreciation and gratitude for Soto and serving in this role when our city needed the most and, and got us through hard times and helped us get out of receivership and continuing to move the district forward. So thank you so much, man.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
I echo Mayor Garcia. Thank you so much for everything you've done, and I am so thrilled to be able to say that we are in a unique position where we have a leader who's strong in finances, and that came in handy in many of the tenure of Mr. Soto. At this point, I think, given that we have this very unique opportunity of having someone who is qualified for that role, and given that you gave us your announcement that you're not going to be running for the role of superintendent, I want to make a motion so that the Leadership and Accountability Subcommittee take on making a plan for the filling of the vacancy for Executive Director of Finance.
Okay, so the motion, just because it was stated on Zoom, I want to make sure everyone got it, was to refer to the Leadership and Accountability Subcommittee to develop a plan regarding the transition for the CFO position, is that? Okay, and it was seconded by Mr. Izaza. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fave?
Yes.
Izaza?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. We'll start on this way and come down. I would just ask, just be brief. Mr. Wellahan?
I'll be brief. Thank you. Yeah, well, it's a somber and, somber day right now. We're losing our, both our chief executive, executive officer and our finance director. I'll, um, start with Sean. I know Sean Mangano. I finally got his name right after all these years, so he'll be proud of me. I've worked with Sean as a Chair of the Finance Committee for, for the last couple of years, and I've really been impressed with his dedication. He's a, he's a numbers guy like myself, but he's able to talk, talk the language and explain things very thoroughly. So I, I always appreciated his efforts. He was always there when I had questions, and when I had to set up a meeting, he was always very there. He was always there for me. So I'm gonna, I'm sorry to see him leave. And Mr. Soto, again, I was hoping you were gonna apply for the, for the super job, for super superintendent. I thought you were well, well-qualified. You've proven that over the last number of years. So that's, that's sad for me. I know you stepped up during COVID. You were sort of, they kind of pushed you into the role. Unfortunately, you stepped up, and I appreciated your dedication to the School Committee, the district, the children, the parents, and the teachers. So I, and so again, it's a sad day, but hopefully we can keep you working here for, for the, for the, for the school district. I appreciate it.
I am really sad to know that you won't be applying. I think you have served this city and this position with great distinction. I am glad, however, that you are willing to stay around with us and continue to serve this city. I think you have done a great job, and we appreciate it, and we thank you.
Mr. Soto. Look at me, Mr. Soto, when I'm talking to you. Sat next to each other for a couple of years there. You annoyed me. But anyways, you know that there were times when you did not agree. But, okay, you didn't have to go there. I was trying, you know, just trying to be nice here. No, but if I can say one thing, you continued that same character that Doctors Wright had, and it was children first. You made sure to keep that relationship with the students. I would walk with you, and, and the students would be like, hey, Mr. Soto. Like, they know, and you would know their name. And that is a quality that not all superintendents have. They don't build that. Students will know that that's, you know, they'll know that's the principal, that's the superintendent, but there's not that bond, and you continued that, and I really admired you for that. Number two, I've always said, and I'm going to keep it brief, Mr. Sheen, I've always said it's not about having an educator, education background in order to run a district. As I said many a times, even in healthcare, you don't have to be a doctor or a nurse to run a hospital. The same goes in education for a district. You had something strong, and that strong background that you had was business administration. You understood the finances. You understood the numbers, because that also impacts what we're putting back when we're investing in our students, and I thank you for that. And I hope you do continue to stay here in our district. I am sad that you're not going to apply. I believe you do have the qualities and the qualifications, but I wish you all the best, and hopefully you'll still stick around. Thank you.
This is LeBron Martinez.
Yes. Good evening for those who are watching. I learned about the meeting changed in regards to it. I did not receive a notice. I was looking through my emails. I did not see it. Mayor did remind me there was a meeting today, but my assumption went based on six o'clock, so I was driving down when I learned that we started at five, but here I am. I'm quite sure you're discussing the fact that the superintendent has informed us of his decision. I myself, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, have regrets that we did take the turn to put this out as a, as a, as a surge with a lot regret after I did that for the reason being that the role he took on for the years that he did during the, while the state had our, our school system, I think he pulled us through what happened with us. And to be honest, this is my own version of what I want to say tonight, is that I went through different superintendent during my time at a school board, and I am sick and tired of the fact that we have to always hire outsiders that are going to come and learn and understand our community. Also, build on their retirement on the backbone of our community. By the time this community is known for the reasons of, of why we either failed or, or we're, we're not achieving, it has a lot to do with this exchange of so many hands of superintendent. There may be others who do not feel like I feel, but this is my own opinion, how I feel about that, and that he had chosen to do that, I think it's also a disgrace for him, maybe, because he, you know, feel, sitting here, having to hear that somebody else is going to have to go apply, that he has to compete for the same position. Shame on us, but I wish you the best of luck in your decision moving forward. I think you've done a great job, knowing you and knowing where you come from, that you, your family raised childrens or who are foster children, who understand our community better, the issues, the social economics that we're facing in this community. It's a shame that we can lose you and start this thing all over again and know where we're going from here, but thank you for your work, and I, you know, honestly, I appreciate everything you've done. And I never speak for me, because this is not about me. I have nine grandkids, three grand, great-grandkids, hoping, hoping that someday we'll be in our system and that they'll be in the good hands and the best of our, our quality and, and services that we can provide. So thank you for your work.
So I'm not sure what more I can say about the thanks that I think that the committee and the community have with the work you've done. I guess I always go back to, I'm going to, you can either blame me or thank me, but I will say that I'm the reason Anthony's here. When he was considering taking the job, we were coworkers together, and we had a long conversation about Holyoke, and I, the fact that I didn't scare him away. Thank you for, for coming, and we appreciate everything you've done, but this isn't, I mean, you are going nowhere as of right now, and we are fortunate to have your leadership here, and it is October. We have many more months, and we know that you will lead with grace and dignity throughout all of this, and that it is here for the students, and also knowing and understanding your deep commitment to making sure everything transitions well, and we appreciate that. My only and my biggest regret is that there won't be a poll this evening. Okay, so we will move on. If you notice in the superintendent's report, there is, the superintendent provided the position request that people had, so that is there about the contracted positions, that is up under his report. As we go through the rest of the pack that we didn't complete, we received a letter from the Mass Association of School Committees on to a motion to receive the letter. Move by Ms. Lefave, is there a second? Second, discussion, says here, this is received by the mayor, that local school committee is receiving the All-State School Committee Award from the MASC. Yeah, so that's here, and it'll be awarded at the conference on November 14th. For anyone that can or would like to attend, please speak with the Vice Chair or Mr. Soto. Roll call, please, to receive the letter.
Mr. Fave?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Izaza?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Solson?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to updates of committees. It is, if you don't have an update, that is okay. You can say no update, because we do get your minutes. Policy and governance?
We have a meeting this Wednesday, starting at 5:30.
Finance and operations?
Thank you. We have a meeting this Thursday at 5:30. We had a meeting on September 11th, and me and Ms. LeBron Martinez were there. Thank you, thank you for, for your attendance in the meeting. I know we're down a member. So we have like a lengthy meeting, some of the items that we voted on. We'll be moving back to the full, full committee. They're not on tonight's agenda. So they'll, they'll be on a full committee agenda moving forward. Thank you.
Well, I, can you explain that? I didn't follow that. What won't be on the full agenda?
Some of the, some of the matters that we voted on, we referred back to this, this committee, but they're not on tonight's
Okay, okay, sorry.
Agenda, that's all. So hopefully they'll be on one moving forward. Thank you.
Joint City Council, I don't think there's an update. Ms. Lefave, local control?
We already have it. So with that being said, we're just gonna, if we can just have a Zoom, the other two members to review our meeting minutes of our last meeting. And that's about it.
Leadership Accountability, we are going to be scheduling to meet again soon. There were some items that Ms. Thompson and the superintendent were putting together regarding the competency determinations for graduation. So once that's ready, it'll be a quick turnaround, but most of the meeting was discussed at the last meeting. Ongoing Business, you'll see the Power School rollout update. And I'm going to jump over to our illustrious Vice Chair, who is in Zoom, to see if she, I should have asked if she had any type of report she wanted to give, and if there's anything on Item B, the search update that she... To see if she, I should have asked if she had any type of reports she wanted to give and if there's anything on item B, the search update that she. Provide, or Ms. Wilson, it's one of the two. So, uh, do you have a vice chair update at all? Or do I, do you want me to go to Ms. Wilson?
No, Ms. Wilson is up.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Um, so thank you. Um, so we met, um, the group, uh, it was, uh. Mr. Izaza and myself, unfortunately due to timing, um, Ms. LeBron Martinez, um, wasn't able to make that meeting. And we, uh, went over the language to send out a. Thank you, request for quotes. Um, and so, uh, that was sent out to four organizations. Um, the update is today, Mr. Mangano, uh, received the four and the lowest quote. Is who we go with according to our guidelines and policies. And so that is with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. It's MASC will be, uh, leading the search for our new superintendent.
So just for process and maybe this, I'm not sure was this the last meeting, does the subcommittee need to take a vote to refer that back? Because right now that mo- that matter is sitting within the subcommittee or, I don't know if Dr. Rivera Cologne or.
So my understanding is it, it, it really shouldn't have been a subcommittee, it should have been like a working group. Um, so it's really not sitting with us, um, moving forward where, you know, the, the, it's. A moot point to have a subcommittee when our. When we go with the lowest bid is, is my statement.
Are there any next steps for the committee?
Well, that was, that was the charge of the committee. The committee's charge was to work on the quotes, review the quotes and then give us the lowest bid, so.
Or any next steps for this committee?
Thank you so much.
Anything for this?
Oh, for our committee.
Like, are we, is Sean starting the contracting process? Like, I guess, just.
Yes, yes, that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions on that?
So.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. Just to be clear, there was a set timeline, um, within this process. So I'm sure as soon as that contract is signed, we are gonna be up and running based upon. Um, being able to make the, meet these mini deadlines, um, and having community input. Uh, which was what we all said we wanted. Thank you.
Mr. Izaza? I mean, so that can, the vice chair can bring that to the next, uh, so he wanted to make a motion to accept the quote and. The vice chair can put that in the agenda for the next meeting, but since it wasn't posted and since we don't have it. Um, it can come up at the, and we can share it out then, um, at the next meeting with it. And I'm sure we'll have to adjust our timeline to, given the contracting process. All the announcements are here for you. Um, let me just make sure, since we skipped around, I don't wanna.
Power School update.
It's the Power School update's attached there unless, I don't think there was anything else.
Just enough.
I think you lost it on table.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to, um, lay on the table the minutes? Uh, roll call, any discussion, roll call? Nope, we have to bring them back first. Roll call.
Mr. Fave?
Yes.
Um, LeBron Martinez here, Mr. Izaza? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Yes. So now we have. The individual minutes that were originally tabled. Um, so was there a specific date? And can you share the date or did you have questions with all of them?
Can I go?
Uh, yeah, is there a specific date?
Yeah.
So which?
Uh, the July twenty first minutes for the. School committee.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty first, twenty twenty five of the school committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved, second, seconded, uh, discussion, Mr. Willoughby?
Yeah, um. He made a motion to go into executive session. And I think it just says like, the roll call vote, I think they should say yes. To go into executive session and I think it, um, did I say, uh, present. Think the vote was to go into executive session, if I'm not mistaken. On the first page, Mr. Sheen made a motion to go into executive session. And the roll call vote, it just says, present, 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 present. The roll call vote should say yes. E- e- each of us voted to go with it. Executive session. So I would just recommend we change present to yes.
On the first page?
On the first page.
Mine says yes.
I know, well, ours doesn't.
Yeah, it says, motion, Mr. Sheen made a motion to suspend the rules and move, I don't, which one are you?
I'm on July twenty first.
Oh, okay. So are you making that motion?
Yes, uh, I'm just gonna make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that we voted to go into. Executive session.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Izaza?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Was there anything else on those minutes? Okay, uh, back to the original motion to approve the minutes as amended, roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Izaza?
Yes.
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 I mean, Mayor Garcia, sorry.
Yes.
And then Mr. Sheen.
Yes, got them both. Um, were there any other minutes, Mr. Willoughby? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept and approve the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty five. April second, twenty twenty five of the Policy and Governance Meeting. April twenty third, twenty twenty five of the Policy and Governance. Move by Ms. LaFave, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Izaza, any discussion, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, moving into announcements, Mr. Willoughby?
Thank you. Um, I was gonna make a announcement to congratulate our mayor for getting. Some sort of an award for Mayor of the Year, so. You got my vote too.
Any other? Oh, sorry, mayor.
And there are announcements here, I don't know if you.
Yeah, we got those, uh, yeah.
Oh, you got them already. Yeah, I just wanted to just, you know, well, first, it's been a very busy summer. Um, I apologize, I couldn't make, uh, the, uh, meetings that we had over the summer, but believe me. You know, they were all community related. I was at home relaxing. I do appreciate. The vice chair on communicating with me and I communicated with her and make sure she was caught up or I was caught up on things, so. Thank you. I do want to let everybody know as we prepare to go through elections. And do our reorg in January, just kind of remind every committee member here, it's. Outside of our traditional practices of having the mayor as the chair, you'll be electing a chair and you'll be electing a vice chair. At the reorg meeting. So two things I want to make note, one, start thinking about it, having conversations, who you want as, if, whether or not any of you are interested. Who wants to be the chair, the vice chair, et cetera. Um, and also number two, so you hear it from me. I'm fine to do whatever folks want to do, don't, you know, I know oftentimes when these things come up, there's that thought, well, what does the mayor want? There's nothing that I want. The only thing that I want is just that we organize and we do business well. That's it. I don't have to be the chair. The vice chair, in fact, I think our charter says I can, what is it, uh, preside. At any moment that I want, not that I'll ever just abruptly come and take. Um, uh, but there's some, you know, responsibility there and I'll always continue to work with everybody. And stay close in contact with the chair and the vice chair to make sure that. Whatever's happening on the city side and the school side that we're aligned and moving our business forward and keeping up with our obligations, so. Um, there's no preference on my end, except that I want to support what the body wants to do. Um, so definitely start having those conversations so we can be ready, hitting the ground running, um, after that reorg meeting. Thank you.
Aren't already listed here.
My packet, but can I make an announcement? To the Transition Academy. Then that happened.
No. You can announce, it's not, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, about Thursday, about a week ago on Thursday, I believe it was, I went out to see the Transition Academy. Do Hispanic Heritage Month event and it was an amazing, um, event to, to see perform. There was one young lady there who cited a, uh, a, a poem. Um, that really touched my, my, you know, heritage and how she really expressed herself and. How their abilities that, you know, sometimes we think they don't have abilities are beyond what, you know, sometimes we don't see. And hoping to see that one day they can come in here at least cite that poem because it was amazing. Their, uh, show. I know that, um, the mayor's, uh, desk. Stuff today showed up, something about their event, but it didn't show the young lady citing that particular poem and I just wanted to share that with the group. Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. LaFave, is there a second? And by Ms. LeBron Martinez, any discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Izaza? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen?
We are adjourned at six oh five tonight.